And this is, I'm going to call this a quarter. So first, this is a meeting of the Board of Education in a public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. And it's not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda below. On request of superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodations for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in this meeting. Would you like to do the roll call? Mr. Elabry?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Ms. Grady Rex?
Here.
Ms. Angus?
Here.
Mr. Lundey?
Here.
Mrs. Avera?
Here.
Mr. Lamer?
Here.
Mr. Pita?
Here.
We'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes. In our package, the meeting minutes from October 24th were included. I'm with the Board of Education approved the meeting minutes from October 24 and 2022 to be addressed presented. Second. It's been moved to the seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from October 24, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, they have been approved. Move on to the approval of the agenda. Board policy provides that the superintendent of schools shall prepare an agenda for all working as directed by the president of the Board of Education. All those of the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented. I'll second. It's been moved to the seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion or amendments, we'll vote on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Agenda has been approved. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is school presentations.
I'd like to introduce Ann Nacon, our special education director, and Kelly Nowitzki and Kellison Kohler, high school special education teachers, and their students to talk about the SNAP and peer-to-peer program.
Hi, good evening. I will be really quick because you want to hear from these guys much more than you want to hear from me. But again, I am Ann Nacon. I serve as your Director of Special Education for the district. And I'm really excited to be here this evening with two of our teachers, Kellison Kohler and Kelly Nowitzki. Kelly and Kellison co-teach our High Needs Resource Room at the high school. And this is a life skills, education-based resource room program where our students who are in our program are not only working on some of their high school credits, but also participating in some other experiences while they're in the high school to help develop other life skills, vocational training, other sports that they will need as their courses study may look different from some of our typical high school students. So amongst some of the great programming that Kellison and Kelly developed are enhancing our SNAP program, which is our Students Need Accepting Peers, which we have some version of that in all of our buildings, but they're really working to amp that and magnify it at the high school setting. And in conjunction, do true bona fide peer-to-peer programming where, you know, the board several years ago approved an elective course for students to be peers tied to and providing support to some of our students with more complex disabilities to support that not only in the general environment, but in the school community as well as in the general community as they needed. Because we know our students learn much better being alongside a peer as opposed to learning from someone who doesn't look like them, which is one of the adults. So Kelly and Kellison together with their students are going to share a little bit more about the programming that they're doing. And we're real excited to have some of our peer supports and students here as well. So I can turn the time over to them. Thank you.
Do you guys want to introduce yourselves and then we'll kind of go through your slides?
I'm Remy Oya.
I'm Paul.
I'm Leanie.
I'm Katie.
Alright, so they're going to kind of go through and say what they like about this program. And then we have some quotes from some of the students in our classroom as well. You guys heard Katie just say.
Oh, okay. Um, I like that we get kind of more of an insight on how these students, um, you know, function and what ways they learn best and how we can support them better.
Going into this program, I wasn't like totally sure on how like people with higher needs like learned and, and like how, how they like are separate from like regular students. And I've like learned a lot about like, um, how to work with them. And I worked with autistic kids in the summer, so I wanted to help them out in the school. So yeah, I'm really happy that we're doing this program.
I like this program because it's helping people on a class and I don't like helping my friends.
I really like this program because it allows me to learn about how kids with high needs get through their day and what they learn and how they learn.
Alright, and what have you guys learned as part of the program?
Um, I've learned that kids with special needs might need a little more patience than you would think that they normally would.
Um, yeah, I've learned that just like, just being patient with them and understanding of like, um, how different each student really is and, um, just like accepting everyone in school.
I like helping kids because they need special help.
I've learned that some kids with special needs in the high need room need more patience because of their disabilities.
And, um, I think also Katie, you're sort of thinking of going into teaching special education now too. Um, some of the things that we've accomplished so far that we are accomplishing is building an inclusive culture in our building, creating friendships within our building and helping students to advocate for one another. So Leanie has a picture there. She's been bringing some of the students down to cheer at the football games with her.
Yeah.
Um.
Go, yeah. Yeah, I invited some, that's just one picture. I've had another student named Nick. He came down, I gave him some pom poms, we danced together, took some pictures. Um, you could tell it really, it really made their day. And I, that, I saw Liam twice at two football games and it was so fun. We, like, he met the team, he talked about his love for Super Mario. And I just love bringing them down and dancing because you can just like tell it like makes their day.
Um, we've done a lot of reading together, learning about different learning differences together as a group. And, um, then also some of the students, Katie and Paul, they get together outside of the classroom and spend time just going downtown and being part of the community. And, um, we're teaching students empathy, creating the sense of belonging, exploring and helping with different programs in our district. Um, we've gone down to Wiley and we're going to continue doing that and learned about their program there. Um, and gone into some of the other classrooms to learn about their programming. And then some teachers have come to us and spoken, told us about, um, their role in the classroom. Um, Mrs. Nacon came to our classroom and a lot of different teachers in different roles, occupational therapists, speech and language, psychologists. Um, we're exploring our community and opportunities outside of our community, developing social skills and awareness, inclusion at the state level. Um, so we went to the Capitol and we went to the Supreme Court. And actually, we, um, one of the Supreme Court tour guides emailed us and she had created a, um, like a task analysis for students when they come to visit the Supreme Court because she felt like that was something that they should have and they have it on their website now. So, um, any student with that learning difference can come to the state Capitol and Supreme Court and have all of those supports in place before they even get there. Do you guys want to share anything about the trip?
Yeah, I learned about making things fair and learned about laws.
I was really excited to go up the trip because I wanted to know what, I wanted to know what's, excited about it and.
Alright, that's just some more of our class. So we have, um, we were getting ready for the, um, we wrote the SNAP bus at the parade. And, um, we were playing a game of Uno there. We've been doing a lot of different games together.
Lots of Uno.
Lots of Super Mario. It's a favorite of one of our students.
Paul's at Uno.
Yeah, and then we're going into classes with peers and supporting students. And, and that's one of our classes is the weight room.
Yeah.
What was that doing there, Paul? Paul.
Yes, Paul.
That's Paul.
I heard you can do that for 30 seconds.
Yes, it's hard to hold it there.
Yeah.
I heard you can do it though.
Yeah.
Paul, you're good. Coach Witt's a good coach. And students are like, peers are starting to make goals for our students. And the students are making goals with the peers about how they want to improve. And the peers are helping them improve in academics and in the weight room and, um, social goals as well. Um, here's some of the SNAP stuff that we've done outside of the classroom. Um, do you guys want to talk about this? Homecoming, anyone want to share the homecoming?
Um, I really, really enjoyed the first experience at homecoming. I didn't know what it was about, but I really enjoyed it. I know I'm having a fun time. Yeah, I do. It was fun.
Yeah, I really liked going out to dinner for SNAP, for homecoming at Aubrey's. It was fun to have the dining room to ourselves and, um, have pizza together before the dance.
And we did some sugar treating together and had an Aubrey's before that. And we've been doing a lot of different, um, lunch buddy stuff in the cafeteria as well. And, um, SNAP kind of, so we were having a little trouble, like, in general, everyone was not really cleaning up in the lunchroom, but we sort of started an incentive program.
Yeah, so Connie doesn't have to clean up.
It is. I went over to each table and I would say like, if you clean up your table, I'll give you some candy. And I just had a whole bag of candy if they had a clean table. It's worked, it's worked. And that was your idea too, so. Um, yeah, we started the homecoming parade and you guys loved that.
Yeah, I really liked it.
What did you, do you want to share?
Um, I enjoyed the homecoming parade. I, uh, I didn't want to be in it. I, I did, I did want to be, I did want to be. Yeah, it was a fun, fun experience staying with my friends and I really enjoyed it.
And then we've been doing dog biscuit sales. Um, we're making the biscuits together as a class and then we're selling them at lunch. And then what we're, um, the money that we're making is going to go towards a family in need and the holidays. It's part of faith in action and, um, we're going to go shopping for the family as part of our work that we're doing as well. Um, do you want to do some?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine. We'll hear from the students. Another part of our program is that getting out the community every Friday. And refer to that as CBI or Community-Based Instruction. And some of the things that we've been doing have been rotating between going to the Dexter Library. Yes.
Senior Center.
Paul, yeah, want to say a little bit about?
Uh, I normally, I normally like, I vacuum at senior center about, um, with, uh, carrying, uh, like, rid away the tables.
Um, we also go out shopping at Bush's, Dollar Tree, filling shopping orders for high school staff. We take the wave to get there and students practice that skill as well, which can be valuable during high school and beyond. And, um, this is part of our program that isn't really, at least right now, it's SNAP, peer-to-peer focus. It's just something new that we need to do this fall. Without two more things, so students are doing a great job. Action shots. Some of our field trips. Those are teacher conservancy in that SNAP or peer-to-peer focus necessarily, but you can see, see Capitol, all justice.
But they align with our curriculum that we have in our classroom too.
Absolutely.
Um, we had advocacy as a unit and then science inquiry. And every month we're doing something that aligns with our units that we're working on.
Many of you have probably heard of, we're in a dependence, EFT grant-funded, um, educational opportunity for our students in High Needs Research Room at the high school. Peers come over in the first hour and help out with that, especially deliveries, things always helping out. Some of the other peers, um, as you can see, some students are very excited to be out of the classroom. We're not so much job skills. Yeah, the scenes are very exciting. It's awesome. And, um, again, it's another relatively new thing that we're doing. Students are, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So some of our future goals are to create a more inclusive community, to create additional opportunities to involve more students and expand our programming, to connect with other programs within our county, and then to continue to help guide students to take a leadership role in this programming. And one pretty cool thing too is that we've actually had some other programs reaching out to us in our county that are interested in what we're doing and want to start connecting with us. Um, so, uh, Pioneers Program as well as High Point and Skyline too, so. Anything else you want to add? Um, it's a piece of one in all.
Like, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is public participation. During public comment, each speaker is allowed to the maximum five minutes for a total of thirty minutes unless otherwise notified. Each speaker will be asked to announce his, or their name and district of residence and indicate that he, she, they represent any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during the single meeting. Those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or superintendent can submit a public comment or available at the meeting entrance or on our website. In addition, as a presiding officer, I would like to remind everyone that public comments should be, should pertain to Dexter community's school district matters and concerns related to the operations of the schools or to matter within the authority of the board. Those who wish to speak shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Also, speakers addressing the board shall take into consideration rules of common courtesy. Speakers who make attacks of a personal nature and/or which do not abide by their rules of common courtesy will be reminded of such rules by the board president or the presiding officer. Such individuals may be asked to leave the meeting if their behavior is disruptive or interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. Also, please understand that board members do not respond to public comments although they will listen carefully and will follow up as appropriate. If there is an immediate need or clarification, it will be so after the speaker's allotted time. With that, um, would anyone like to, uh, speak up to comment? Anyone in the public? Okay. Um, seeing no one running towards the podium, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which will see administrative and board updates, starting with Dr. Tims. That's great, and it's a work.
Um, we have parent-teacher conferences this week, so we have a half-day Thursday and Friday. Scheduled differently by building. It's nice to get back to what feels like normal conferences or wasn't a talk or virtually, personally, it's really, that was nice. Um, we have, uh, we hosted fifteen students and two staff members from Avintina, Skinasium, Berkhousen. Over the last ten days, they are on a plane right now heading home. Our families had a great time, the kids had a great time meeting their new partners and they will travel to, people stay with their partners in Berkhousen. Um, and then election tomorrow, so I want to wish everybody. What's your vote? They watched a lot of football. Um, they ended up going to two high school games, they got into the big house and they ended up at Fort Field, they were at some point. Um, it was really fascinating. It talked in the exchange. We schedule enough activities for the kids and families, but then they always creatively put their own together. So we end up with families that are organic, we start hosting bonafires, things like that. We had families that took kids to Chicago over the weekend. One went up into Canada. Um, one, a couple of families went out to Lake Michigan or sleeping in Fairdun. They, it's really interesting to see the things they put together and how the bonds work. So as the kids got on the bus today, you watch them crying in tears. It, they get really attached with it. It, it's a great experience. Pre-pandemic, we held multiple exchanges. We had French with France, we had China, we had Germany. This is our first one, really trying to get back into it. It's a great opportunity for kids to do. The world is newly small.
It's, and those, like you said, it's such a great, um, experience and how we also have exchanged these and have the same thing. People that we knew, they would see each other again if it's still that six months in between. Um, alright, um, any other things else, anyone have any questions for Dr. Tims?
We submitted, I don't know, no, it takes, that's all, some of them. We submitted a bunch of grants. I know, uh, Mr. Bruder was supposed to create a, what was it, the 98C presentation, it's supposed to be, last week they canceled it. Some respect to a video months ago. The grants are all there. Everybody submitted grants. I updated that one today. I didn't even know it existed. We don't qualify.
Alright, um, I don't have anything to update. So we'll move on to the gentleman, our student representatives.
Sure, so it was good to hear from the SNAP kid. So I have quite a few friends who are part of that program. It's a great program. I wish there was a little bit more awareness of it in the high school. But it was basically, across country made states this weekend. The boys team got 22nd place. We're happy with it. I don't rank, so. That's, that's an interesting point. So, um, they, they do their dog biscuit big sale in the cafeteria occasionally. And I see them in the hallways doing their group independence program. That's delivering coffee to teachers. Um, how do you raise more awareness about it? It'd be great to get more students involved. And the only way that I know you sign up for is at the club meeting at lunch. Uh, they have a table, a SNAP table, but it's not always cool. SNAP is, it'd be cool if we could somehow maybe include it in after the announcement or something. I don't know. Be cool to go somewhere.
For whole district announcement, uh, like parent-teacher conferences, our district's, their Friday, we bet for every school, at least for the high school. And then, uh, as well as the football team. I mean, everyone is aware by now, but continue to be undefeated game again this Friday. So I think we're regional champs now, right? So, yeah, district champ.
It's regional, it's great.
Yeah, regional, so I'm sure we'll keep winning, doing good, uh, best football team in a while, so nothing to be disappointed about. The good news.
I think we're, we're home for this game. Then it'll be at a neutral site and then Fort Field. Here's ground, so.
We should have a band there for Halloween.
Well.
All the way to Fort Field, so.
So, yeah.
I feel the best player.
Oh, yeah. So it's about time.
Yeah.
It's a little sad because I have a hundred and eighty people. And since, uh, high school band is like volunteer, people are going to get up to like match the kids. So then we're going to double the size of our bands to our own field, so.
I feel like maybe there's a band leadership.
Well, Dr. Morris trying to get him to work, but, so.
We're about a lot like.
Yeah. We only have, I, we only have like a maximum like a hundred and thirty kids, so they're bringing more to a way you have max capacity. And, um. They, I think, yeah.
Our sound is really good.
It's on.
It's a pride. It's all a pride.
Any, any more comment? You know anyone in the band? Yeah, tell them, student section's a little overrated, it's more important than we have. And that's really it.
Alright, we don't have any consent items planned for this evening. So we'll move on to our action items, starting off with our second reading for our policies. Our package included the draft policies, uh, 0144.1, compensation 0175.1, board expense reimbursement 0151.1, session of this business meetings, 3109, curricular animals, 3108, service animals, 3, excuse me, 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act, 7440.03, small unmanned aircraft systems, and 2260, Title IX sexual harassment. These policies were reviewed and edited by the policy committee at their meeting on October 19th and approved for the first reading on October 24th and are presented for a second reading and final approval this evening. I'm with the Board of Education approved attached policies 0144.1, 0175.1, 0151.1, 3109, 3108, 6700, 7440.03, and 2260 for second reading and final approval as presented. I'll second. It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion?
I was just gonna say. I was just gonna note that we didn't receive any comments from the board after the last.
Yeah, this is the second reading, so we did discuss it at the first one, plus the three. Maybe it's job to go through and then we present for the first reading something that is pretty, pretty ready to go. Um, alright, any other discussion? Okay. Been moved in seconded, we've discussed it, so we'll go to a roll call vote, um, to approve the attached policies.
Aye. Ms. Grady Rex?
Aye.
Ms. Angus?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mrs. Avera?
Aye.
Mr. Elabry?
Aye.
Hi.
What difference? I like that. Clearly I'm on my toes. Through the entire vote to figure it out. All right, we'll move on to our second action item, the twenty-twenty-three school building and site bonds. Our package includes a sample resolution prepared by Revon, Pruncel, Alan Zuma, and Amanda Van Dusen with Miller, Canfield, Caddis, and Stone, P L C, and a summary memo, CFO Sharon Rashke regarding resolution for twenty-twenty-three school building and site bonds. The twenty-seventeen bond proposal was approved by voters on August eighth, eighth, twenty-seventeen to gain maximum benefit from the voter authorized twenty-seventeen bond proposal. The district planned to issue the bonds in two or more series, the first series was issued on November twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, and provided a lot, five million, fifty million, six, six hundred and five thousand dollars principal amount. And we have accomplished the first series of our planning projects. The business officers' office is requesting authorization to issue the second series of bonds authorized pursuant to the twenty-seventeen bond proposal. The principal amount was not to exceed seventeen million, seven hundred seventy thousand dollars. The funds will be provided for the planning infrastructure plus the planning infrastructure buses, technology, equipment for the next three to five years. The issue will be designated as the twenty-twenty-three school building site bonds. This will conclude our authorization pursuant to the twenty-seventeen bond proposal. I move that the board of education authorize the attached resolution authorizing the twenty-twenty-three school building and site bonds for financing the projects approved by the voters on August eighth, twenty-seventeen. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
It was a great story. I mean, I feel like, I just came up with that.
Time to question this certification. So on the first, I suggested, right?
The first series.
Well, that's the first series, right? That's already part of the first block.
We've already, we've already basically spent, committed the expenditures of all of the first series, and we're starting to do bidding that will, will have enough money for from that first series, so we're now in that second series.
Any other questions? Any discussion?
I guess I'll just offer one more clarifying question. And so I believe we heard that this will complete the out of money that the voters authorized. So we will be taking the rest of the money and making it available for the school to complete the projects that we had intended for that original long series.
Correct. I anticipate we'll sell the bonds in February. The, the current like mechanical bids that you guys approved previously with the installation, we will run out of the rest of our cash, and so we will, we will need it if all goes as planned by February-ish, so. And then yes, then that will, will invest it like we did before. It'll be a shorter time window because, you know, we, we do have some, you know, we didn't buy as many buses as we needed to and all of that, so. But that was the intent, was we would issue that second series for the next three to five years, and then if we have other things that we need to do, we'll need to go forward with the bond.
We were fortunate, we received the shared work beginning for any, so that all of us didn't have to use bond dollars. With that COVID year, we gained here. I didn't need buses. It's been, the plan is put together, so about seventeen, following plan. New adjustments would take some off. We've made some adjustments, this will allow us, we started with the big mechanical package, it was a million dollars in a moment later. That was all the actual equipment. The equipment is like everything in the world. And we're working through the process, and we're, initially wanted to get the boilers in before heating season, that's not fully made in. So February's good timing, because once the heating season ends, that will be over. But I feel like we can chill or work in while we're heating. The buses.
It's been moved and seconded. Looking around, we're talking about a very good discussion, so we'll do a roll call vote on the motion that's on the table. This is Raderex. Hi.
Angus. Hi.
Mr. Lundy.
Hi.
This is Avera.
Hi.
Mr. Obray.
Hi.
Mr. Bruderly.
Hi.
And our last action item today is the Dexter community pool's report. Our package includes a recommendation memo and the articulation from Principal for Operations, Greg McCallum, regarding the community pool scoreboard, scoreboard, not the school board, the scoreboard bid category eleven sixty-five. There are two motion options depending on what the school board resides.
Sharon gives it, I take it away.
I'd love to discuss. On the second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to discuss.
Discuss, yes, so we put out for a bit a new scoreboard in the Dexter community pool. The other one just needed, we needed a new scoreboard. So one of the biggest things when we put it out there was to have it aligned with our Colorado timing system. So we got two qualified bids in. The bid that came in, the low bid that met all the qualifications was United Sports Services. It's a Vivie LED board. You'll see two options there, the first base option was the straight board, but they did give an alternate. So right now it was bid out to be a ten millimeter pitch. Our current board is thirty millimeter red, so it's the big dots, this is a much more intensive pixel, pixel picture. Um, one of the options was to go to a five millimeter board, five millimeter if you want pixels, so just make it more clear, more vibrant if you want to look at that. There was a second alternate, but talking with our swim coach where it was, there was an option to put in a recording, like where you could stream it, so it looked like the Olympics, where you could see Chelsea swimmer, doctor swimmer swimming in the lane. But there's some legal ramifications where Michael Coach McQ was like, we can't have that, so that we took that option off. So.
What was the current scoreboard?
The current scoreboard, I believe it's about fifteen years old.
Do any districts have that sort of technology?
Not that I know of, Michael said they tried it and they were like, people just start putting themselves in the technology piece. I think it's more of, it sounds like universities, other places, but.
I think SAA is pretty tough. I think they might have. But forever they wouldn't log you to. And knowing they will set more of the whole games.
You can do a lot of them, just like the little bricks and stuff, they don't need to be too intense. We were at Chelsea for those, and they had one of their scoreboard, they did put up their senior's on the scoreboard, just like it wasn't anyone's career or anything, it was just like in the scoreboard, the period of bid, so you can still do a lot of it, it's not going to put only have now where it's red dots. It's like the football team one, so.
So we'll be able to project, like you could put, yes, we'll be able to put every senior up on the board if you want, you can, you can put videos up, just like, so it would be.
Right, reason that we wouldn't want to go with the higher definition.
It would be, no, no, there's no reason not to. It would be, so the board put out there right now is same size of what we have, it's a hairbit smaller with twice, I guess, than what it is. So we just make it that much clearer. That, that would really be the biggest advantage of it, you could put more on the board to make it clear for our fan.
I guess, so if you get the higher definition, now we'll be happier down the road, everybody else is changing, or something higher than that.
It would be.
Unless there's some real cost issue, that's, it's a lot of on you.
Sounds like from, from talking to the company and doing by the diligence, coming in to fix and any issues, they train our staff how to fix them and repair them, they give us the parts, we can do it right away ourselves. They've been around since the seventies, it is also part of the Swiss timing system. So when you look at, they're the ones that do run the Olympics and the different courts, so it is a. I'm, I'm sure it could, it, it does, I would have to see it lines up with our Colorado system, so whatever function as far as water polo, if we did swimming, diving, all the, all the functions, I'm sure we have that.
So have we checked if it's comparable with the outlets that are like the back of the deck box?
Yeah, Colorado timing system, so that was one of the big things that we put in the bid, to make sure that whatever board we had worked with the current system. We didn't want to put a board up and go, oh, now we have to remove all the touchpads in the system, it's like, no, we, we have this, this works, we want to keep our Colorado timing system. So I'm sure for a couple of competitors, it, because their systems didn't line up with Colorado timing six that we have, but the, the LED board does.
You say LED board, is that similar to sign across the street? Side on the road.
I, I'm not sure exactly if that's, that type of clarity, yes, when you look at the boards and do what it is, like, yeah. Yep, yep. Right, right, it would be, it would be, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what pixels are across, but it would be like watching TV.
I was just curious, there, I mean, obviously less money is better, but there was a pretty large difference between the two bids for the same item, and I just was curious. Is there a difference?
I'm, I'm not sure, when you looked at the board, when you looked at the other board that was offered, it was a foot taller than this, the same width though that came out. The pixel was the same, it is a true, that board is a Colorado board, it is a Colorado timing board and system that was there. I, when you looked at how it lined up, I didn't see any other difference in cost besides that foot height difference reality, but everything else is very similar.
Especially today, sometimes it may relate to how bad somebody wants to get a job.
That could be too, that could be too.
We've followed that many times in the past, you can see people that are bidding just to put something in there with no real expectation.
Right.
Of getting, it's not unusual to have a wide range of prices and proposals.
Right, of how it works out, and, and the sports service, after talking to them, they, it sounds like for a long time they were relying, because they're Swiss, they're the Swiss timing system, they're like, well, we're Swiss timing, we do the Olympics, we do all, like, everybody should watch our boards. But they really never went to schools and like picked up the proposals and the bid packages from schools, and now they're more into going out and advocating and looking for pools.
I think we spend a lot of effort and evaluating bids to make sure they're fully responsive, and frequently there'll be bids that are not responsive. Sometimes we'll find there's a mistake, and people will beg off and withdraw a bid, so there's some of the pretty points to make sure that we're getting what we expect.
Yeah, we clarified that, but I mean, it's very clear in here that this board will interact, do everything with the Colorado timing six. The removal, the installation cost, they were exactly the same for both companies, but it's, it's very clear that your board will work with everything we have.
So the other company that came in higher, they are the ones that went through, they installed our current scoreboard. And my understanding is that they are local, and they will, they would be able to provide support. But something that cued me off was when you said that the other company gave us the parts and that we have to fix it, in knowing how
Yeah.
Very short-staffed we are.
So when we, when we went out and told, when I talked to representative United Sports Services about their board, they did, they, he did what he talked, he said ninety-five percent of anything that pops up, you have the parts and everything that you can do that would train you, you can fix it onsite. They do have someone that can be there within forty-eight working hours if we needed to work on it, they need someone there to hire someone to come out and work on the board, make that happen.
Did you talk to Regal about that as well?
I know Jay is right down the road, show up. Jay comes and helps us fix out stuff right away.
So we're, the comparison of when they came in really fifty-nine thousand compared to seven point thousand. If we go in the higher pixelated option, and is the pixelation valid?
It was so current, so.
So the difference between prices in my understanding is that they're two different systems, and that the LED, the LED will be omega, and the other higher one will be the actual Colorado timing systems, which correlates to what we already have.
So, so what, what?
Higher pixels was forty-seven hundred.
Right, so forty-seven, thirty-four thousand is roughly nine thousand.
Okay, and then the other one's.
Versus the Regal, which is seventy-one. So we're talking about this at about eleven grand, plus the fifty percent. I'm just, it's a good point to think about the cost of labor and, but, yes.
And going to a lot of them.
The, the Regal bid did not have alternatives to go to a higher pixelated, go to higher pixels, so.
So that was what I was trying to get to, which is where is the pixelation comparison? Is this the lower pixel?
It was, so the initial one, when you look at the bid, so the lower bid price, I have to look at how, with no alternates, so the bid price was the fifty-four thousand, six, six, six hundred and seventy dollars was the one that matches the ten millimeter. So it was what matched. No, no, no.
Board policy to say what we do, the question initially was to go to the higher, yeah, the higher definition.
Is the lowest responsible bidder, the Colorado timing system, they're set up to work with Colorado boards. However, there are all the companies in this one that wanted to begin based the Colorado timing system for their board. That's a smart person.
If we don't go with the low bid, I think it's got to be policy.
Well, it's also, we want to go with the responsible bid, we want to go with the bid that's going to, you know, in two years.
That's not what the policy says, what was responsive, not responsive, that's the.
I think that's.
Five-year warranty, I believe, is what I'm saying. I could, I could go, I did not bring the one from Colorado timing, would be the bad, if you want, we can open up the discussion. I believe it was on Regal, it was the exact same bid, I don't have that on my computer, I pull it up, that's.
So it would be nice.
So they were coming for you, talking to the office, forty dollars.
Right, right, which is what, and, and United Sports Service, they would have a contractor on site that they would call to come in, because they have other boards in state that would come in and do repairs.
I'm just trying to see whether, very hard to see, that's so difficult to your point, which is, are we pretty long, and are they, but it's. Like buying a Chevy, but.
They work together, this is pretty common.
If, if we don't go, you have to have a reason, that, as a government entity, I believe we have to have a reason not to go with the lost price of bid. And if we wanted something, we didn't put it in specs, then I guess that's our problem, it's our fault. I believe we've violated the policy to go below the loss responsive bid, and that's why we have people evaluate to make sure that the bid is fully responsive, and we've kind of just qualified many times where they weren't fully responsive.
He said it had to work with Colorado.
We, we put, when we went, so in order to go and put the bid together, we looked at what project, what did we want? What do we want in there that made sure it worked with Colorado timing and all the specs we wanted? I pulled the spec sheet from a board that is a Colorado board and said, we want to make sure it has all the pieces and it works in alliance, it works exactly with our system. The Viv LED board met all those specifications as well, and was our lowest bidder, as Dick said multiple times. That's there, so they met everything that we put in the specs to get what we want.
We wouldn't have the alternative to reject both bids and then lock another bid, if I change, but what are.
But we can't bid out that we specifically want.
No, it's got to be on specs. So I think our choices are to either approve the recommendation or reject all bids, start over. Well, they say within policy and probably state law, policies, so the seventeen K, it's an extra plus.
You, you could go, we could go, I did not specify. You, you could go, we could go, I did not specify.
Less pixel.
Correct.
Less, less definition.
It would do all the ten millimeter, yeah, we could. Right, right.
So my, my other question was, usually we would have this in committee and then we'd go to discussion and then we'd go to action and then we'd break to action. Is there a big timeline on this that we're moving it to fast or?
We're just putting the bid out, let's talk.
It's pretty straight forward.
Interesting also that we're moving it through because, well, I know. We've already discussed about how everything backed up, but I mean, I know that we're going to all part of the year, so there's not.
It would be, according to the United Sports Services, when I talk to them, I would, pretty realistic fact that where, I mean, they, they think what, but we still have to get bid and get it approved, get it ordered.
So the motion on the table was to discuss, there's not a motion currently about this board.
I guess. Would you like me to make another? I'm, I'm happy to make another motion. I guess I am inclined towards Dick's point that if we can go with the alternative, we are likely to be more happy with that down the road. And so I guess I would probably go with, making the motion around the alternates. About that since we're assessing. I would, I need to clarify that I think we're upgrading to a five millimeter now. Right now, they're, all of the dirt for ten dollars, right?
Yes, yes, that is an area, you're right, that's right, honey. Yep, sorry, you are correct. That would be to a five millimeter.
Chairman, I move with the Board of Education, award of bid category eleven sixty-five K full school board. United Sports Services with a base bid of fifty-four thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The ultimate pitch upgrade five millimeters for four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars plus a fifty percent of eight thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-five cents for a project total of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? All right, we'll put it to a roll. Mrs. Vegas. Mr. Lundy.
Hi.
Mrs. Amara.
Hi.
Mr. Alabrey.
Hi.
Mr. Brule. Hi. Mr. Brule today.
We'll move on to discussion items, not our plans. So we are on to our second area of, or our second opportunity for public participation. This time during public comment, each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes or a total of fifteen minutes unless otherwise notified. Since no one spoke at the first one, no one is on the, speaking more than once on the same subject. But just to remind, please take into consideration that we will listen, that you should make your public comments about Dexter Community Schools, district matters and concerns related to the operations of school or matters within the authority of the board. And also please use, how encouraging. If anyone would like to.
Kevin Greach, appreciate the snap here to peer presentation. I was just thinking, I didn't hear anyone say it, National Honor Society is always a volunteer hours. Is it an opportunity to take it to National Honor Societies and have them, have that as a potential volunteer? Because I always know their, my daughters, and they're always looking for people. And they always have the greatest opportunity to do it, so I think that would be a great way to help connect the dots here. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, I. I, I mean, good job. We'll move on to board comments. I'd like to comment two things. What an exciting fall for the sports and, I mean, just, my goodness, I can't imagine, we haven't had this excitement on all sports in so long. I will say my graduating class was the last time we reached out, so I do have to say that. It was a little while ago, but I remember that, so I'm glad that that happened again. And then I also wanted to say, I, I actually appreciate the, the parent teacher conferences that they're offering either in person or Zoom for some classes because it's, as a working parent, it's really nice to have that option and coordinate it with my husband that works somewhere else and be on the same page in fifteen hours. So I think, you know, when we look at COVID, sometimes there are some good things that came out of it and Zoom is one of them, ironically, so I appreciate that.
I don't know, I would say that I appreciated the recognition for allowing the team out there. I know there's a lot of teams out there that, for years, that probably should have recognized. They used to. I just, yeah, I just want to appreciate that, but it's a great thing. For all these teams, whether it's SEC Conference, state individual title. Should try to continue to do that and some of this, let's say, we might not know right away. But we should encourage the coaches to bring it up to battle map. I don't think it was very hard to do. I think so many groups out there, it doesn't have to be a sport. Attracting, you know, you should recognize that. Change, it's only a secondary existence. But. Some of the ways. I prefer battle map. Seek out those.
Generally, we have that maybe as part of playoffs.
That is a good point here.
It's usually a year later or a basketball game.
I think this thing's good to do. Whether it's a basketball game. We need to make sure if you have to watch it the same. Shouldn't forget.
Think an interesting way to do that, I don't remember if this house is that pre-COVID. We had to do all the homecoming or if we have one of these five games, which after all the other all sports. I think maybe just like bringing the captains down to make sure and then kind of awarding them. Because they, it'd be kind of cluttered to have a hundred kids on the field because every sport has the whole team. It's hard to feel like you, because you just had the ones who were being recognized, so it will come down. But if we were moving on, we were doing this, if it was tall beyond one football game or even if we have multiple teams, I think just bring the captains down, let them wave around like a team flag or something if they don't have a power, the team has their flag, so something like that. Doesn't waste too much time from the other halftime stuff. That's quick recognition for the parents and it's good for the kids.
We try to do, we had to, just we had to get an HSA approval because they're being. We have to, at half times, we have to make sure that half time is certainly, we have one time a year. So it, we, we have to work with the rules we have for what we need. So that's.
Timing is a issue because the spring sports, you got to bring back the warmup. By the time you're going to have any real. We try to do the recognition.
They try. I think now that the middle band times to come, you're going to get seven minutes or a half that day. We'll just cut it down the middle. Every school gets to have like, just the best, like, do like dance or recognition or anything. Then it's just seven minutes to fit in three different things, so I'm going to make some motivation for that.
Well, I did the shout out on Facebook, but we have a state water, water pool representative. Totally is. So we're playing Sunday, right?
Yeah, the water pool organization in Michigan does like an exhibition match where they, the coaches get to build on just eight players. Or like we're, a meeting for the east and west and you play like a east versus west. Because for some reason in water pool, there is like a big divide and not a lot of teams in the state because there's not a lot of water up there. So you have a lot of teams out in the east and Arby and Rowanham and that, and West out in like Concord and that's the little stuff. So they play east versus west. East side, so representing, you know. Yeah, well. Representing Dexter.
Yeah, we see it's funny when we do, when they go out to the west side.
Those kids are big out there. They feed them something else.
All right, we have informational items in our package as well and no closed session planned. So with that, I will adjourn it and this is our only meeting in the summer, so we'll deal with it this summer.